Okay, now you're good.
No? Okay, let's call the meeting's order. Would you do a roll call, Erin?
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Fuhr.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Swedberg.
Here.
Meverden.
Here.
Ortley.
Here.
Kevin Schmidt.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is being held in compliance with the open meeting law. I would like an approval of the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the agenda is approved as submitted. Okay, then the next item is Chief of Police. Erin, do you want to take over?
Yep. Today was our Chief of Police, Randy Remicker's, last day in office. He unfortunately was not able to be here with us today. He is out doing his military duty. So I just have a couple of quick things to say and a letter that he had wrote for everyone, and then we'll be on to the next item. So, on behalf of the City Departments and staff, we would like to express our gratitude and thanks to Police Chief Randy Remicker. Chief Remicker made our little city his home in 2018. He took the time to get to know our community, our establishments, our schools, and bring his family into our fold. Chief Remicker has an extensive military background and was recently promoted to Brigadier General in the National Guard. What an accomplishment. He'll be dedicating more of his time to the National Guard and I'm sure to the to-do list at home. Chief Remicker served our city with a smile and a "how can I help you" attitude. His military and previous police experience helped shape our police department after the transition from the county. We appreciate all his acts of kindness, positivity, support, and leadership. We wish him the very best in his retirement, and know we'll be seeing him around our beautiful Algoma. Congratulations on your retirement, Chief Remicker. Like I said before, Chief Remicker wasn't able to attend in person tonight, so in closing, I'd like to read his farewell letter to you all. Honorable City Council members and Mayor of the City of Algoma, greetings. It has been an honor and a privilege to be your Chief of Police. I feel we have made great strides with rebuilding the police department since the City and Sheriff's Department separated ways. I would like to thank the entire council and city for the opportunity to work in this position for the past four and a half years. I have enjoyed and appreciated the opportunities I've had getting to know our great community and leading our police department. In my time as chief, we have cut crime roughly in half and reestablished our community policing efforts. We have also reestablished our training program, fixed the vehicle fleet, reestablished our current police policies based on best practice, have sought out and been awarded several grants to pay for a police vehicle, and our new body worn camera system, started our participation in the state drug take-back program, and moved the department into a secured facility. I had planned on being present at the City Council on June 5th to personally thank all of you and to turn the keys over to the new chief. However, I have been called away to Fort Knox, Kentucky, to do some work for the military and do apologize for not being here in person. I consider all of you friends, and if you ever need anything, just give me a call. I still consider Algoma my hometown, and I will always treasure my time and experiences with the Algoma Police Department. Sincerely, Randy Remicker, Brigadier General, Chief of Police, now retired. All right, does there any other comments on that? Otherwise, we'll move forward. Mr. Allen, could you please step forward? Ladies and gentlemen, it is our pleasure to introduce you all to the City of Algoma's chosen candidate to fill the Chief of Police position, David Allen. David is a Kiwanee County resident and a familiar face to most. He has a well-tenured work experience in law enforcement. He retired as a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Conservation Warden in November of 2020. He was with the DNR from January 2000 to November of 2020. Twenty years of service to the State of Wisconsin shows his passion and dedication to law enforcement. Mr. Allen didn't stay retired long. He went back to work at Pagels Family Business where he started in maintenance and was promoted to the maintenance supervisor. Prior to being a conservation warden in Wisconsin, David was a conservation officer/park ranger for the State of Utah. He's an avid member of the Muscat City Sportsman Club and Ducks Unlimited, serving as president for both organizations. His knowledge and background have helped him build a rapport with multiple organizations and law enforcement agencies across the area. I could sit here and list all of his certifications, classes he teaches, and numerous accolades, but I prefer you ask him yourself when he gets to know you. David is quoted time and time again saying, "I work for the people. I serve the people." And throughout the interview and hiring process, we saw that core value time and time again. He's going to be boots on the ground, ready to see you, shake your hand, and get to know you. We know he's going to be an integral part of our community. He's going to lead our police department, and we are so excited to see what he's going to do to keep our beautiful Algoma moving forward. Chief Allen, do you have anything you'd like to say to the council, mayor, or citizens? If not, we can get you sworn in.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I won't let you down.
All right, let's swear you in, but I want you to come on this side, please. If you could raise your right hand. That's not the right one.
Bring him up here.
All right. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. Aye, David Christopher Allen.
Aye, David Christopher Allen.
Having been elected or appointed to...
Having been elected or appointed to...
The Office of Chief of Police for the City of Algoma.
The Office of Chief of Police for the City of Algoma.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof...
And have not entered upon the duties thereof...
Swear or affirm...
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will...
Support the Constitution...
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office...
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now I'd like David's wife to come up and pin his badge on, if you don't mind.
Requires report.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the job. We're looking forward to working with you. Okay, then we go on with the agenda, and the next item is approval of the meeting minutes from the May 1st and May 16th meetings.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the minutes are approved. Public comment. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and say anything to the council? Okay, come on forward.
Well, I hate to follow that. Congratulations. Joel Kitchen's the State Assembly Representative. I just wanted to stop down and catch up with what's going on down here. We're working on the budget right now. It'll be done in a few weeks. One of the big issues is the shared revenue. Algoma honestly has done better than pretty much anybody else in my community historically with shared revenue, and the minimum increase that they're going to get through the new plan would be 15%. So that'll be another 140-some thousand for Algoma, so I think that will work out well for you. There's some other things coming up with, you know, with affordable housing and that kind of thing, which hopefully might be able to take advantage of in Algoma, but that'll be coming out in the next few days. But otherwise, unless anybody has any questions for me, always happy to, you know, help you guys out or answer questions. And I brought you your new Wisconsin flag. It was looking pretty ratty out there, so. Okay, thanks.
Does anyone else want to come forward and say anything on the public comment? Anyone else? One more time. Anybody want to come forward? If not, we will close public comment. Okay, then the next item is consideration of bills and claims. Did anybody get a chance to look at the bills?
Yeah. We got the question about the nursing home. I understand Amber's going to...
Yeah, Amber's coming up.
Come out and explain that one, because that one was a little confusing, so.
Good evening. So I did receive a couple of questions about the bills that are in your packets for the Med Center. There was one for Med Center Director, yes, Medical Director, not Med Center Director, Medical Director, from August of 2022. That bill never got paid. It somehow got missed in the transition in September. So Carol did go back and look through the records and verify that it had not been paid, so we do owe it. And then there was two checks issued to Fremont SNF Propco. That is the money that Sam gets for patient care that is still coming into our account because his Medicare number is not active yet. He did apply for it in December. They are still waiting to hear from the feds, so you're going to continue to see those checks going out to him periodically, probably two, maybe three times a month. So until his Medicare number is fully active, we'll continue to pass that money on to him. And then there was...
Six grand.
Six grand for the, is that the parking lot?
The audit.
The audit.
You're in progress, Billy. Soptown Lawrence County.
Oh, for their portion of the audit. So, all of the money has now been transferred over into our accounts, in our books. The auditors did set up a debt service fund for the outstanding debt for WRS unfunded liabilities loan and the parking lot loan. So all of these bills for the Med Center are coming out of that leftover money from the sale and the cash they had on hand at closing.
So, the money from the residents is collected, and then it's sent over to us?
It's, yeah, it comes, their Medicare reimbursement for patient care is deposited into the Algoma Medical Center checking account that is still active for that purpose only. And then we pass that money right back out of that account to Sam.
So is that account in our name, or is it in...
Yeah, it's been transferred into our name, but the account is still intact because that's the number that the Medicare people have, so it's a direct deposit amount from them.
Thank you.
So, absolutely nothing out of Medicare is going, and all of this stuff is going to be taken care of.
Say that again.
Sam's licensing and all of that.
He's in the process. He's applied, and he submitted everything he needs to submit, so now it's in the fed's hands.
And this pass-through is acceptable?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Are there any other questions about bills? Okay, then could I get a motion to approve the payment of...
So moved.
Second.
Jake.
Erin, do you want to do a roll call on?
Yep, so I have a motion to approve the bills by Wayne Schmidt and a second by Jake Maring. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, and a roll call vote on that. Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt. Dashlet.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, next item is committee reports. Does anybody have any questions on any of the committee reports that were submitted in your packets? If there are no questions, then could I get a motion to approve them as submitted?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the committee reports are approved. Old business? Matt, Erin, is there anything under old business?
Nothing, nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well then we're on to resolutions.
All right, so the first resolution before you tonight is Resolution 1161-2023, a resolution approving the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources NR 208 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the City of Algoma. So included with your resolution was also the CIMAR report. So we're looking for a motion to approve the CIMAR report, just that you've reviewed it, and that the city will endeavor to maintain and operate the wastewater treatment facility in the best manner practicable.
I make a motion to approve the CIMAR report.
And I would second that.
All right, so Dashlet, motion seconded by Maring to adopt Resolution 161, I'm sorry, 1161-2023 as it regards to CIMAR.
Okay, roll call.
And a roll call vote on that. Ortley.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Then the next resolution?
One moment, please. All right, so the next resolution is Resolution 1162-2023, a resolution authorizing a contract with TRC Environmental Corporation.
I'll make a formal motion to move forward with Resolution 1162-2023. Second.
I'll second. Casey, second.
Thanks, man.
Okay, would you do a roll call on that?
One moment. Dashlet.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, next one, the resolution of the seal coating city streets.
All right, so this was a, or is a resolution authorizing a contract with Scott Construction, Inc. to seal coat portions of the following, Parker Avenue, Mill Street, and Cleveland Avenue. The resolution describes what areas it's going to be. This was talked about at the Special Public Works meeting. Casey, do you have anything to add? Matt?
I don't. The resolution now does have a 15% contingency built into it year-to-date or time-to-date. Working with Scott's Construction, we've never, ever went over our, their estimated account. They've billed us for actual dollars, and more or less it's in there in case there would be anything that we would have to fix or address when the day that they were out there. And that would be as far as adding something on, so.
If you, if you would, could you, could you, Lee and I were, and Wayne were sitting on the PP, or the Public Works when we, when we passed this along to council. We've got other members that aren't privy to what we're doing on a finance side. If you could dive into that just a little bit.
Sure, just to touch on this. So, we did have $350,000 allocated for seal coating of city streets in our 2024 capital outlay. Instead of doing it all in 2024, we're breaking it up a little bit, less than half of it, that we are going to do in 2023 under a contract price before their price goes up again because of the cost of tar. And the remainder of that 350,000, if you minus this 147,311, we will continue to then perform that work yet done in 2024 under our capital outlay. So, that's where that money is budgeted under the capital outlay. Does anybody else have a question on it?
Why did they have to come back to redo? I mean, I'd seen the board out manholes on South Street, and I...
Yes, and a great point, and I'm glad you brought that up, Casey, is everything that they seal coated last year, like around, from Algoma Motors on Jefferson to the, to the north of there, some of the interior streets, all of South Street, they actually used the wrong sized chip. They used too big of a chip, and we took a lot of it off with our plow, and that chip didn't bond. Even before we plowed, it didn't bond because there's not enough compaction. It's more of a chip that you would use, like on a town road out in the country where you have a lot more vehicle traffic. In the city, it didn't bond. So at the cost or the expense of Scott's, they are going to come back and reseal everything they did last year.
Thank you.
At no expense to the city.
I'll make a motion if there are no other questions.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion was made by Wayne Schmidt, seconded by Scott Meverden to adopt Resolution 1163-2023, seal coating the city streets as presented.
Your roll call.
Maring.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, then the next resolution for the more contract?
I will talk to this just for a second here. There is a resolution in here. After the Finance and Personnel meeting, the mayor and common council had given me directive to bring this to the city attorney. Since then, I did bring it to the city attorney. I did raise the price from 200 to 300, and I also, we sent it off to the League of, Wisconsin League of Municipalities, and everybody has okayed the contract. Everybody is, concurs with what the contract reads. I sent it off to the county, and I had heard nothing back from the county if they agreed to it. So, the council now, if they want to adopt this, or we can put it on Finance and Personnel to move forward if we hear something back from the county.
We could adopt it contingent...
That is, on the county agreeing. If the council so chooses, you can adopt it contingent on the, on the court council from the county agreeing with it.
Was there any verbiage that was changed for the original contract?
Per our, per our legal and the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, they actually liked everything the way it was written in there, but for the change of the 300. I know Jake had made a comment at Finance and Personnel. There is some stuff that contradicts where it says the city shell, and then right underneath it, the county shell. It's just, a lot of it is lawyer verbiage that protects the city.
Boilerplate.
Boilerplate.
Well, we got, we got Jake sitting back here laughing, so.
Don't ask him a question, because he's trying to... So I would make the motion that we adopt Resolution 1164-23 contingent to the county approving.
I'll second that.
So it's contingent to the county approving the 300?
Well, the contract.
In the contract?
Right.
And that was seconded by?
Ms. John. Early.
Okay, you want to do a roll call on that?
Swedberg.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
No.
Maring.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
The yeas have it seven to one. Motion carried.
Okay, then the next resolution about tax increment District Number Three amendment?
So your agendas were amended on Friday afternoon to include Resolution 1165-2023, a resolution amending the project plan of tax incremental District Number Three. This has already gone through the RDA for approval. The next stop is to come here at the City Council level, and then if it's approved at this level, we would take it to the Joint Review Board. Matt, can you touch on what the plan amendment is? And then we also have Katrina Becker of Becker Professional Services on the speaker, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, so the amended plan from what was done that we would be adding into this district is we will be going out to bid to do some stormwater work in between, or right above, I guess I would say, Summit Beach condos. There's been a stormwater issue for approximately eight to 10 years. We will put a collection basin in, and then pipe it all the way down across the property that it would outflow onto the lake to clean up where that storm water is now running over the, running almost down the hill and then right across their parking lot. So clean it up, and then it will be to do some lift station upgrades down on that property, and also to do a lift grade up, lift station sanitary, on the sanitary side of things. We would do a, at the Big Lake, which is right on Highway 42, just south of that property as well. So it'd be two lift stations for sanitary sewer, and then the stormwater work is what this would be for.
Is that going to run into right-of-way of the county highway?
It will not. We will not have, so where our, our basin will be, or our collection point will be, is going to be just east of the highway right-of-way, because the DOT will not let us have a collection basin in there right-of-way.
And then we have to have an engineer draw everything?
Robert E. Lee is currently working with city staff, our engineers, that they are doing the design on that. That is correct.
So that'll solve the problem that they've had in...
And the washout going down the hill over all of their existing utilities.
Oh, somebody's got their bike outside. Okay, thank you, Matt.
The parade for the police chief.
Does anybody have any questions for Katrina from Becker Professional Services?
Katrina, how is this going to affect...
One second, Jake. Katrina, Jake's going to ask a question. I know you probably won't be able to hear it, so as soon as he's done asking it, I will repeat it for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Katrina, how is this going to affect the terms of our current incremental district in terms of time and buyout? Maybe that might even be a better question for Amber, I don't know.
Katrina, how is this going to affect the current terms of the tax increment district in the buyout? Is that correct, Jake?
Yeah.
The timeframe.
The timeframe on that.
Of closing the TID.
Um, I believe the timeframe won't be affected. So right now, the, um, the TID, the costs, these new project costs can be financed with the TID existing how it is. It'll be a little tight, but there are also several vacant parcels that have good opportunities for development as well. So assuming those get developed, that will help boost the TID numbers even more. So right now, the timeframe won't change.
Won't change.
It will not change.
It will not change. What we have scheduled, and thank you, Katrina, the way it is scheduled out is that TID will close at its scheduled date, as is. If, like Katrina's saying, some of those vacant lots would get developed, we still have the potential now to close it earlier.
Okay.
And it looks like right now, the closing year would be 2046.
Well, I propose that we pass this along to, uh, the, uh... I'm in a loss, the joint review.
You'd like to adopt, so we'll adopt this resolution, and then the Joint Review Board can do their thing?
Yeah. Thank you, Casey.
So Maring is making a motion to adopt Resolution 1165-2023, which is a resolution amending the project plan of tax incremental District Number Three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Swedberg.
And then do a roll call.
Meverden.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Passes. Okay, and then the...
Thank you, Katrina. You don't have to stand anymore if you don't, if you don't want to.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to ordinance 838.
All right, so before you tonight is Ordinance 838, an ordinance amending and adjusting the City of Algoma wastewater utility rates as set out in Section 4684 of the municipal code.
Does anybody have any questions? This was discussed through Public Works and then Finance and Personnel, working with our auditors that went through this and did the work, that we would break it up, and we would have an adjustment in July, and the remainder of that adjustment in January, and then we would catch back up, and we would go back to our common 3% rate increase.
So this is, to refresh my memory, this is...
Sanitary sewer rate adjustment.
No, 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 this is, this is like the seven-year, seven-year adjustment that we've been making every, every...
That is correct.
Every six or seven years.
The rates that we've got in front of us tonight?
Yes.
Are those the rates effective July 1st?
That is correct. That would be effective July 1st, and then there'd be another bump on January 1st, and then the following January 1st, we'd go back to our normal structure rates.
Any other questions from Anna on this issue?
Make a motion to approve the sanitary sewer rates.
Second.
Motion by Dashlet, seconded by Fuhr.
Okay, and then we can do a roll call.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, then we're moving on to Administrator's report.
Yeah, it's just a couple of things that I have, pretty short and sweet. First of all, I'd like to thank... Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, the Kiwanee County Sheriff's Department through this whole process. Um, they've been very instrumental on working, um, with city staff, uh, myself, the city clerk, um, our current police officers filling shifts and helping us out and continuing here too as we onboard with Chief Allen. Um, they will be working, um, and, and last Thursday, we started working with, with Chief Allen and starting to schedule back our own employees, um, back on the ground here. Um, so, I'd like to thank the sheriff's department for everything they've done, um, for the process of, of getting to where we are here today. Um, so, thank you to them for that and welcome, Dave. And I know we got a lot of things to clean up, but, uh, we hit the ground running on Thursday and we will continue to do that and get things scheduled with our own officers here back on the ground. So, second thing I just want to mention is grass cutting, uh, for the general public. When people are cutting their grass and they blow their grass out on the street, we ask if you would please sweep that up, clean that up. Uh, just because you blow it out on the street, it doesn't mean that that's there for the street sweeper to clean up. Um, if you clean it up, that's less that we have to take out of the storm sewers throughout the city. When it does rain, if it does rain, um, that's where it all ends up is in our storm sewers. And all of our storm sewers here in the city of Algoma, uh, more or less go directly into the Annapay River or out, uh, onto our beach. Or we have to clean them up because they're all plugged up. So, for the residents that are cutting their grass, if you blow your grass out in the street, please clean up after it. So, those are the only two things I have.
Okay. Can we move on to mayor's appointment? Um, I had an appointment that I was planning on making today for the Algoma Utilities. For those of you that don't know, Bob Valis, who was very important member of their board, passed away and we need to replace him. But I have three wonderful people that want to come forward and take the position. And rather than make that my choice, I decided to make it a council choice. So, at a personnel meeting, I am going to give information on the three candidates and then take a motion of which one will come forward. And then the next, um, utility commission is the next day, so they could immediately go to work the next day. So, so I am putting it off today. Okay, and that's all I have for appointments. Okay, um, agenda items for next meeting, if you have anything, get that to Matt or Erin. The next meeting date?
The next meeting date is scheduled for, potentially scheduled for Monday, July third. Um, the reason we left it off of here is I want to make sure before we actually go forward with it that we are gonna have enough people present as it is the Fourth of July holiday the next week. And I know there are already a lot of vacations and people out of town already. So, did we want to keep it on Monday, July third? Do we want to make it Wednesday, the fifth? What are you, what are the council's wishes? Anybody?
Yeah, any day works for me.
July third works for the majority?
Nobody's out of town?
Jake?
Jake is?
Okay, but we still have.
I prefer to move it to the fifth.
Okay.
Because everyone's gonna have that four-day weekend.
Fifth doesn't work for you?
I can't make the fifth.
How about the tenth? How about the tenth?
That's a.
That's a.
Monday, it's a Monday.
A Monday, Monday, June tenth?
July.
July.
July tenth.
I don't believe there are any other committee meetings that day. Would we like to move it to Monday, July tenth at six P.M. or?
Sure, I'll move that.
Okay, I, I don't need a motion for it. We're just gonna set it for July tenth. Okay, so, seven, ten, twenty, twenty-three at six P.M.?
And just a reminder that finance and personnel is on the nineteenth of this month, not on the twentieth. Um, finance and personnel will meet on Monday instead of Tuesday.
Yep, and at six P.M. because at four o'clock is the library board meeting and at four o'clock is the C.B.C. meeting. So, we will go at six P.M.
Okay, next item is closed session?
All right, so, we're looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one-C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Looking for a new hire for the Algoma Police Department. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So, move, Matt, so move.
Second.
Okay, do you want to do a roll call to go in?
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
All right, then at this time, we will look to go into closed session.
Everybody stick around. Everybody stick around.